Are we ready? Oh, yeah. See if we have anybody on Zoom.
Recording in progress.
Okay, this is the regular Planning Commission meeting, November 1st, 2023. I'll call the meeting to order. First thing we'll do is to observe a moment of silence for former Selectman Steve Plunkard, who unfortunately passed away last week. He was a great asset to the town. His planning skills were excellent. You know, he was a real visionary. Okay, so we'll go to item number two. Adjust agenda, if there's any adjustments. None? Okay. Meeting minutes. We have meeting minutes to approve from October 4th at October 18th. We could start with October 4th, give a chance for people to go through them. Anybody can make a motion to accept when they're ready?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay. Motion is passed. Meeting minutes of October 4th are approved. Next, we'll go on to meeting minutes of October 18th. Wonder if anybody wants to make a motion?
I move that the minutes of the 18th be approved.
Okay.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Okay, motion has passed.
Sorry, who seconded that?
Okay, next is the... I wanted to go over the flood hazard regulations. We don't have to go over every detail, just sort of the most important parts. Just so everybody is familiar. If they have any questions, if I can't answer them, or Bruce can't, we can ask Jason.
Be clarified. We adopted these lists in 2016?
Yes.
Are they going to do them again in light of the fact that things flooded and sponsored? They didn't... They thought we're sort of immune?
You know, I'm not sure. There may be some amendments. I mean, these are pretty detailed.
Yeah.
Is that more maps or the actual regulations?
I know Jason said they were gonna update the FEMA maps, because they haven't been updated in many years. And I think that's happening now.
That's really, I guess, what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
The FEMA maps. But the FEMA maps will, of course, drive the regulations. Because, you know, the lines will move.
Yeah, but not necessarily, like, we still...
Yeah, not the words.
Yeah, if you're in here, you need to go through this, and maybe that map has changed. Is there... And maybe it's not a huge thing in Cavendish, but I know Ludlow saw a lot of permitting that needed to happen right after the flood. And as a citizen there, I felt like it... The town didn't do a lot to help out these people going through that process where, you know, hey, you just got hit with an insane natural disaster, and like, is there anything the town could do to, like, you know, get that process moving a little faster? And I don't know. I mean, it seems like it's not until, you know, coming up that we're having anyone, like, coming to that. But I don't know if there's anything, you know, that the town has the ability to kind of fast-track some of this stuff. And maybe there really hasn't been anything that's presented itself in that way.
Yeah, I don't think... That we... I think we only have one now.
Yeah.
But I'm thinking, maybe, I mean, there may be, if it's like an appeal or a conditional use, then they sort of have to go through the Planning Commission.
Yeah.
And it was more of like, you know, they just want to kind of just rebuild.
Right, yes.
Yeah.
Well, I know what you mean, exactly. I keep on hearing that what's keeping... One of the things that's slowed the reopening of Shaw's is that it was, quote, permitting.
Yeah, and I think that maybe initially that was the case. You know, it's just rumor, 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 but like, I think that they... They're changing their original, like, maybe taking the Rite Aid space. And I know that there's some corporate stuff with, you know, whoever owns Shaw's is selling to another big company and that whole thing. But yes, a prime example, like Shaw's, we should not hold the grocery store up.
Yeah, it wasn't a zoning...
Yeah.
It wasn't zoning or development review boards that was slowing things down, was it?
Initially, possibly. But I wasn't really paying attention much until recently.
Okay.
Yeah, and I guess that's what I'm thinking of, like, you know, if Singleton's was, you know, had some issues and, you know, like, hey, we should try to be doing everything we can as a... In the town to get that moving faster, but...
Right.
But I guess that doesn't really have...
Well, in a way, the town did. They certainly didn't get in Singleton's way while they're pumping out the cellar and cleaning everything up.
Yeah.
Were... What, were they closed one day? The two?
Yeah, if even a day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, the regulations, they don't cover, you know, if you're cleaning up or anything like that, trying to get your business back going. But if you were gonna put an addition on or something like that...
Yeah. And it seemed, what I noticed there was like, you know, you need you need A, B, and C to move forward, but you can't get A until C is kind of figured out. And it was just kind of this hierarchy where like, you know... And if we haven't really faced it here, then I don't think we need to spend too much time talking about it, but...
Probably like all the letters you need, questionnaire.
Yeah. And like, oh, you need this final, you know, you need the final height of your building. Well, we haven't, you know, we're definitely following the regulation, but the architect hasn't got back to... Or the structural engineer hasn't got back to us with this, and, you know, you should get the permit if, you know,
Yeah.
You're saying you'll follow, make sure you follow the rules, and yeah.
Yep, yeah, I mean, just, I guess, building elevations, that's a tough one, because you have to then go back to make sure that they did, and then if they didn't...
Yeah.
But that's, I mean, you can put conditions, you know, it has to be at this elevation. And then maybe the final permit would be issued after that's verified.
Yeah.
So...
Well, yeah, you get that conditional permit, but you need to...
Right. Yeah. But, and also too, I think, just communicating with people what they need to do, you know, what permits they need, how to get them. That might be helpful.
Yeah, the education piece is, I think, important of just like knowing what you need
Right.
Before you come up and ask for it.
Yeah, and it's tough, yeah, trying to find a surveyor too, you know, it's... It definitely holds things up, but... Okay. So, yeah, if we go to, is it page four, lands to which the regulations apply? There's basically three. There's the river corridor. That's identified in the definitions. It's basically where the... I think it's like where the river naturally flows, like, between banks.
Yes, that's usually where the floodway is, too.
Exactly, and above that, depending. So, so that's the corridor, then the special flood hazard areas are like the FEMA maps, where areas flood.
Yes.
And then there's stream setbacks, which apply to basically all perennial streams. I don't believe it covers intermittent streams, but we can look at that here, see if it's identified. There's a lot of definitions. Well, it doesn't... Okay, stream means a river. Stream means a stream or river included in the Vermont hydrography data set is maintained by the Vermont Center for Geographic Information.
So if it shows up as a blue line on the map?
Yeah.
It's perennial stream, yeah.
Yep. Which generally is like perennial streams that flow all year. But, so anyway, those are our three main things that we're looking at. Then it goes on. You know, about base flood elevations that need to be interpreted. And then on page five, it goes, you have, it's a table basically for development review in the hazard areas. And it has like exempted, prohibited, conditional use, or permitted. Permitted would be they just get a permit from the officer when they're on their way. Conditional use would be review under the Planning Commission. Prohibited, obviously you can't, so if you look in prohibited, new structures. And you have like the special flood hazard area, the floodway, and the setbacks that we just discussed. So new structures, they're all prohibited. Storage is all prohibited. Improvements to existing structures in the special flood hazard area. They're permitted and conditional. Depending on what they're doing, I guess. Floodway, it's conditional. River corridor is conditional. So it just goes on and on. Grading or fill, the special flood area, actually, that's all prohibited.
Filling in.
Filling in.
Yeah.
So, which is something to pay attention to when our hearing.
Is that really an issue there?
Yes. So it goes on, you know, grading, road maintenance, road improvements, bridges and culverts. You know, agriculture, forestry, open space, recreation, they're all allowed. Road maintenance is all allowed, so...
Now, road maintenance is, that's just like, you can't necessarily change what's there necessarily. Could you like take a dirt road and pave it? Or dirt driveway and pave it? Or is that like a...
I would imagine, because I know a lot of times...
I guess that's road improvement conditional, yeah.
Yeah, because I mean gravel roads, they're just as impermeable as paved
Yeah.
When they're packed down, you know, sheer pack. I know that's what a lot of engineers just consider them the same. So then on page six, we've got permitted development. Prohibited development. Goes on, new residential or non-residential structures, storage or junkyards, new fill. Except it's necessary to elevate structures above the base flood. So if they needed fill around it to raise it, they could do that. Accessory structures, critical facilities are prohibited in all areas. All development not exempted, permitted, or conditionally permitted, so... And then we have conditional use review. Which is any substantial improvement, elevation, relocation of existing structures or floodproofing. Replacement of storage tanks or existing structures. Improvements to existing structures in the floodway, grading, excavation, or the creation of a pond. Improvements to existing roads. Bridges, culverts, managed... Channel management activities. Of course, that would require a stream alteration.
Stream alteration permit.
Yep. So if someone's doing a bridge or a culvert in a, you know, flood hazard area, or any of these, they're supposed to get a permit.
You know, it was explained to me by some state one time about permits in rivers. The law of Vermont might as well read, you can add nothing to a river, you can take nothing out of a river without a permit.
Right.
Pretty much sums it up. Then somebody said, oh, what about a fish? Said that's what that license is for. That's your permit.
Yeah.
So would, like, a culvert would be specifically like for, like, a river culvert? Like, even like a driveway culvert?
Probably more of like a stream, going over a stream.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the way I would interpret it. Okay. So then we have exempted activities, like removal of a building, maintenance of existing roads, forestry, agriculture. There's variances, and there's criteria to approving them. But it would have to be, Vermont A and R would have to approve it. So...
Approve the variance.
That's right. So say if we had a project that was in violation, they could go, I guess, for a variance, but then we would have to get approval from the state.
Yeah, would we either grant or not grant that, and then it would go to the state?
Well, I guess if someone came in, they wanted to do something in the flood hazard, any of the flood hazard areas, upstream setbacks. And they came for a variance, we would just send it off to the state.
It would just go directly, right?
Directly, and then they would say, yeah, that's okay. And then we could approve it or still not, based on that information, so...
Well, even if you want to construct a private driveway over a waterway, like a 20-mile stream road, you have to involve the A and R on that.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Yep. But there's matters to be considered in the variances. There's like 10 of them, so if we did get a variance, you'd have to look at each one, and then kind of judge it based on that.
And so, like, just because I, my parents live off of 20 Mile, there's, there was like a bridge constructed on over 20 Mile Stream recently, past few years, like, did they come to this board first?
No.
They go right to the state?
I don't know whether they did any of that.
Or they did, they didn't, okay.
You're talking about the one that got washed out in front of, oh, no, you...
I've read at the bottom of Quinn Falin.
Yeah. I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah, because I would imagine that...
I'm sure that the state became involved with it probably when somebody inquired
Yeah.
what's going on with that. No, they're very, very nudgy about putting bridges or culverts across the... You notice how that's lower, and then you climb up to the bridge?
Yeah.
That obviously was engineered by someone to, that's supposed to take the fast water, leave the bridge up, and wash on the side of it.
Yeah, so like, in theory, that would be, you know, there is a flood plain around 20 Mile Stream. So in that case, they should have come here for a permit for the flood hazard regulations.
I would imagine, yeah, they're in the flood plain.
In which case, or at least the bridge would be, the driveway would be.
Yep, and they're in the, within the stream setback.
Yeah.
These simply weren't enforced
Yeah.
Through the years.
Yeah.
But, yeah, they'd have to go, they would go for a stream alteration permit, and then the town gets copied that.
Yeah.
And then it'd say, hey, you gotta come get a, do a flood hazard review.
Yeah.
So... Which generally, if like the state okays it, then...
Yeah, like in that case, like, it's, hey, you're putting a bridge across that's kind of out of
Right.
Somewhat of our purview, like, it can be allowed, you need to go get this stuff, and
Right.
Then we can weigh in on it.
Right, and it would be a conditional use, I would imagine. Or a variance, but... So anyway, then it goes through, like, non-conforming structures. Basically saying that, say there's like a non-conforming structure that's within the floodway or stream setback. There could be a hearing. And then the Planning Commission could approve, you know, the repair, relocation, or replacement, or enlargement of a non-conforming structure. So if they want to put an addition on a living room or bedrooms, they'd have to come to the Planning Commission. And then... But there are definitely some conditions. Yeah, there's, you know, four conditions, but... Like the new, you know, proposed development would have to comply with section seven. Yeah, it goes on, okay. Yeah, section seven is development standards. So it doesn't really have, you know, this talks about being reasonably safe from flooding, design-operated, maintained, modified, and adequately anchored to prevent flotation. Kind of common sense things, constructed by methods and practices that minimize flood damage, and on and on. So, kind of goes through that. You know, it talks about having the lowest floor elevation, a foot above the base flood elevation, so... And it addresses like sewage systems, recreational vehicles, bridges and culverts. So for, okay, getting back to bridges and culverts, by which their nature must be placed over, in or over the stream, must have a stream alteration permit. So there we go. Subdivisions and planned unit developments must be accessible by dry land outside the special flood hazard areas. Remember with that, they're gonna do that big development up off of Carlton Road there, right before I read. And that would have been a no-no, because their access was over a flood area, so...
So you can access it, you're private home, but you can't have a subdivision?
No, nope, you'd have your, like, your house, you would have to be able to access it from dry land.
So like, I mean, just that place on 20 Mile we're talking about?
Right.
How do they access that?
How, you mean if it floods?
Yeah.
Well, as I look at it, I see that the the water will probably only be an issue while it's flowing in a raging flood.
Yeah.
Of course, after the waters recede, there's going to be damage.
Yeah.
But the bridge will, will no doubt remain where it is. They'll have to bring in some fill.
Yeah.
Do some grading.
Like the other bridge just up the hill, that got washed out in Irene.
Yeah.
And if that house that's up there now, if that was there, they would have been stopped.
That would have been unfortunate for them if they were up there. And I always wondered why that bridge went out in Irene. It must have been the Beaver Dams that were, that so, such a torrent of water went down through there, because that's high.
Yeah.
And of course, this flooded around, the, but, the, most of the beavers seem to have abandoned 20 Mile Stream. There was a, there were like seven or eight dams in a row from across from where, where Carol's lived, right on up to the mansion.
Yeah.
They were, they weren't big, but they were sure, an aggregate total of it was a lot of water.
Yeah.
Yep, you know what? That's wrong. It's only refers to bridges and subdivisions, and planned unit developments have to be accessible by dry land. So like a single-family house would... Which makes sense, because if you have, you know, 20 people...
Yeah, well, I, like, the overlook in Ludlow, just past the fire station.
Right.
That probably is not accessible.
Right. Yeah. Yep, probably not, unless they can come from the golf course side. I don't know if they can or not. Probably not.
Probably not a, maybe a trail, but not a road.
Yeah. Okay. So maybe we should go to river corridor and stream setback on page 11. Because we could probably hone in on this a little bit. Let's see, river corridor and stream setback, improvements to existing structures. And any associated fill is needed to comply with the elevation requirements in the special flood hazard areas. Shall not decrease the distance between the existing primary building and the top of the bank. So you can't build closer to the stream bank. You can go away from it.
If you're allowed.
Right. Development shall not increase the susceptibility of that or other properties to fluvial erosion damage. That's a big one. Development shall not increase the potential of materials being swept onto other lands or into the stream and causing damage to other properties from fluvial erosion.
That makes sense.
Yep, so three and four, I think, we need to pay attention to.
Yeah, that's a lot of fluvial erosion in this last one.
Yeah. Yep. Development shall not cause an undue burden on public services and facilities, including roads, bridges, culverts, and emergency service. Which say if, you know, somebody puts a structure of any kind, fence, whatever, shed within the stream setback, if that got washed away, that could plug culverts downstream.
Bridges.
Bridges.
That's always been the issue.
Yep, like, yeah.
Is propane tanks or things like that?
Oh, yeah.
Is that kind of covered at all in here?
Yes.
What tank? Propane tanks?
Above ground, they sure are. They have to be anchored.
Yeah.
The one, the last one, they're, what, a big 500-pounder got wedged against...
By the sewer plant. Is that what you mean on Ludlow?
Uh, yeah, there was one there, but there was also one in Proctorsville.
Yeah.
It went against Larry, and I forget his wife's name, their house, a yellow house in Proctorsville on Main Street. I think it came from behind the post office.
Yeah, well, I was working, we were doing that project on the corner of East Lake and Ellison Lake Road there.
Oh, yeah.
Big propane tank buried right next to the river, washed it out. And that, that went right into the lake.
Right. Well, that's, yeah, probably within the setback, which would be allowed.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Just because like, oh, it's buried, it's, you know, more secure, but as soon as it was able to get into like the the sand and stuff they bury them in, that washed right out.
Right. Right. Yeah, so that's, that's a big one there, too. Okay. Then it goes on to application, you know, administration, application submission requirements. There is a application now for a flood hazard review. But that's pretty much standard. I mean, we don't really have to go through that as much.
Do we get involved with like... Do we get involved with like, you didn't, you didn't apply, so here's your punishment or?
Um, ye, that would be the administrative officer.
Who? Of Cavendish?
Yeah.
Who? We. I guess we talked about it the last, it would, it could be somebody from the regional planning commission.
Mm hmm.
Or it could be Rick.
Right.
We have to, before this is all, we all out, all done, we have to appoint a designated person.
For.
And Ja- Jason.
Be that, that off, that officer, the one that says no.
Right, um, it can't be anybody on the planning commission. This would be someone separate, but Rick fills that role now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um. And, well, that. That remains to be something to consider because you, you're, you're. But put some work on the poor guy.
I know.
Jason seemed amenable to finding somebody at that level, right, in the?
You know, I know for subdivision regs, but maybe.
But for others?
Maybe for flood hazard.
Hmm, we look, I guess we need to look into it.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
But like, what is, is, is it a fine? Is it like, okay, you need to take it out? But like, who decides what the, um?
Remedy or penalty?
Yeah, what the penalty might be.
I think that goes to the select board, right?
Yeah. Actually, if, they really should be, they should be codified in the, in the regulations.
They probably are, yeah. They could probably look at that here and see. Decisions. Let's see. There's appeals, we can go over that. Enforcement and penalties. Okay, after seven days, if the violation has not been remedied in accordance with all the laws here, any person who is found to have violated this bylaw shall be fined by the court not more than $100 for each offense. A viol, okay, but let's see, it goes, it's, it's the enforcement and penalty. It shall be the duty of the administrative officer to enforce the provisions of this bylaw. On determination that a violation exists, the administrative officer shall notify the alleged offender. Okay, then it goes, the notice of enforcement shall state, the violation exists, that the alleged offender has the opportunity to cure the violation within seven days of receipt. That failure to cure the violation may result in fines or loss of flood insurance.
That should be an incentive?
Yeah. Well, that's, I, I went to the online with John Broker Campbell and he not too pleased with Cavendish. In terms of we, the town could lose flood hazard insurance if we keep getting violations.
Hmm, what are the violations on?
I guess, he didn't get into it, but certain properties, I guess, I don't know.
Of like residence, residents, not town properties?
Not town properties. Well, maybe, um, Greven Field, that's one we'll have to look into.
Yeah.
When they rebuild, you could do a ball field, but it has to be to flood hazard standards.
Hmm.
You know, like.
And so is that more like, we need to be enforcing this kind of stuff?
Yeah.
Well, Vermont overall, flood hazard is a big issue, is, has historically been a huge issue year after year after year, so it needs to be forefront in people's mind.
Right, right. If any, let's see, if any appeals have been resolved, but the violation reminds, the administrative officer shall submit a decla, declaration to the administrator of the National Flood Insurance, requesting a denial of flood insurance to the violator.
So is this part of what we're doing now to help with that, um, that you mentioned about possibility of losing flood insurance for Cavendish? Um, is any of this?
I don't know, because, I mean, if it's, if it's not in the floodway, only, only properties that are in violation within the floodway, I don't think like stream setbacks.
Hmm.
Are included. If it's in, if it's on the, you know, on these maps here.
Right.
Definitely, but, uh. Like a stream setback, I mean, they wouldn't necessarily have flood hazard insurance, so.
But no, they're, they're, um, the setbacks are affected by inundation flooding.
Right.
Water just rises, ma- maybe it messes up your cellar, but it's not destructive.
Right.
You may end up with, with garbage and silt and stuff all over your, your property.
Hmm.
Uh, when the water recedes, but it's not going to undermine your foundation or.
Right.
Or rip out your driveway.
Right. So. And a lot of this too, I mean, I would imagine if it gets, we'd want to get legal counsel. For some, you know, if it was a big project that we had to review.
It's, that's, that's me, I'm sorry. I had a phone call, I just turned it off.
Yeah, no problem, okay.
I have a sick granddaughter, you can have your phone on.
That's right.
What?
You have a sick granddaughter, you can have your phone on.
Absolutely.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay. So it basically, I guess it just says that the town can, can incur fines. You know, like hopefully it wouldn't go that far with, with, uh, these projects, but, and then, um, let me just go back a little bit.
You know, when they were putting in the skateboard park, the, you know, the, the one at Greven Field.
Oh, yeah.
Um. Scott Judson came because we were building a structure in the, uh, you know, in the, the floodplain.
Hmm.
And, uh, it wasn't Scott Judson at the time, I can't remember his name. Um, and he, he said at that time that there are design standards for putting dugouts and things like that.
That's right.
And, and that when, and he actually said this, the next time this floods, you know, when you rebuild it, we're, you're gonna want to do it better.
That's right, that's right. And the town, I know Rick is aware of that, so with Greven Field, if and when it gets rebuilt, they're gonna have to, like concrete or cinder block dugouts, things that aren't gonna float away, the green monster.
Well, they have, they talked about panels that would swing.
Oh, yeah.
As the water hit them, you know, they'd be hinged.
Right.
The water would, the, the water would, would of course knock them up, float, it'd be a mess when it was done.
Hmm.
But they wouldn't, they, they wouldn't destruct.
Right, and they did turn it before, it was like a catcher's mitt.
Yeah.
And then they turned it to go with the river, so, but the people put a lot of time and effort into that.
They sure did.
So. So I guess we'll see what happens there. So I think that's it on.
Todd Benus.
Oh, yeah, Todd, I know Todd.
Yeah, he was the one that worked on that, where I met with Richard and him.
Yeah. Um, all right, I don't know if there's any questions on the flood hazard regs or I just recommend kind of going through them again before the hearing and. Yeah. Okay. Next on the agenda, new business, discuss proposed Route 5 bike corridor and consider writing a letter of support.
Where'd you know about that?
I don't know a lot, Mary Armrod. Did I, did I send you guys an email?
No.
Okay, basically, they want to, since Route 5 doesn't get a lot of traffic anymore.
No.
They want to make like a, the whole Route 5, um, you know, bike, bike corridor, you know, with.
From, from Massachusetts to Canada?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of good, a lot of good, uh, good spots for it.
Right. Uh, let me just go back and see.
So it'd be next to the road or would you be taking part of the road? Do you know offhand?
Combination.
Combination, yeah.
Okay.
You know.
That's this, uh, the legislature has asked our state transportation agency, V Trans, to look into approving Route 5 for a bicycle corridor from Massachusetts to Canada. And they're conducting a survey now um, of towns and regional planning commissions along Route 5. I mean, we're not along it, but, um, we're close.
That just follows the Connecticut River?
Yes.
You know Cooper, uh, Margot's son, Cooper?
Sure.
He lives in Manhattan.
Hmm.
And he rides up here.
On a bicycle.
Spencer.
Yeah.
Takes two days.
Right.
From Manhattan up to here.
Hmm.
And he had, and, and, you know, he, he was explaining to Margot, who's trying to relay it to me, that he doesn't necessarily go on busy roads.
Hmm.
Um, he, and it was fascinating how he actually gets up here through Massachusetts and Connecticut.
Hmm.
Um, so the, the, there are, there are people that do it, two days to Manhattan.
Right.
That, that's incredible, and then people would use part of it, they'd use four miles or 10 miles of it.
Hmm.
You know, back and forth for the communities nearby. I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, so I mean, even though we're not in a budding town, maybe.
Somebody would drive there and take, and take advantage of it?
Yeah, we will support anything like that.
That's right, that's right.
Certainly.
Yeah, I agree, but if the board is inclined.
Make a resolution.
Make a resolution to.
Let Mary know.
Yep. Um, we can, I'll make a resolution to support the, uh, Route 5 bike corridor. Um, if someone wants to make that motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Second?
That's second.
Okay, uh, any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
I.
Opposed?
Nope.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and just write a letter of support and, uh, copy everybody.
Who is it to? Who's the one, the group that's doing it?
You know what? I will give you that person's name. Uh, can't seem to find it, but it's, he gave me the information.
Who's that?
Jason, uh, Race, Rasmussen. Hmm.
Yeah, so we just found out about it from Regal Plan?
Yes. Yep. Okay, yep, so I'll find that email and get that information. All right, any old business? Uh, review correspondence, didn't see any here, double check.
Nope.
Uh, any other, item nine, discuss any other business PC members may have?
Um, I just think we should have two copies of the flood hazard regu, regulations for the two parties. They're gonna be here.
Hmm.
Just give them copies when, that way they, they can see what we're referring to.
Hmm.
You know, during the, during, during the meeting.
Okay, does anybody else want full copies too?
I've got to get.
I can, I can have.
I think you emailed it to us, because I was, that's, I was referring to it on, on, on the email that you sent.
You will email me a copy, I'll print them.
Okay. All right, and I can have copies here for anybody, so that's a good idea, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
It was on the August 30th email you attached them, or, um, I'm sorry, it was August 26th.
Uh huh, okay.
And that was a PDF file of it.
Yep.
But yeah, I did think that would be a good idea, that way they're, they know, they can see it.
It's not arbitrary, it's a.
Right.
There are, you know.
Because we'll refer to the certain sections.
Right.
Where, you know, where it, uh, is applicable, so. Okay, uh, motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay.
Perfect.
Uh, any discussion? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, no opposed, okay, meeting is ended.